Hello and welcome to our online public meeting for the proposed Windsor Town Council. My name's Alison Carpenter, I'm the campaign manager for the Steering Committee. So, welcome to everyone. I just wanted to go through a few housekeeping rules with you all today. So, we've muted all of the lines. The reason for that is to avoid any background noise and to make sure that we can hear the presenters very clearly. We will then have a session after the presentation where you can ask questions. So, we would ask that you type your questions throughout the meeting and type them in the chat window. And we will do our best to answer those in the Q and A session. Any questions that we're unable to answer or that we don't get to, we will then make sure that we publish answers to on our social media. And I'm now going to hand over to our Chair, who is Robert Peel.
Hello and welcome to the Winter Town Council meeting this evening. This is really important for us all and I'm glad so many people have made it. Now, as you know, my name is Robert Peel and I'm the Chair of the Proposed Windsor Town Council. And what I would like to do, because you don't know who I am, well, some people might, I'd just like to give you a resume of my history. We've lived in Windsor for 38 years. I served with the Third Battalion of the Parish Unit Regiment with the 16th Independent Parish unit Brigade, which took us to many parts of the world, but it was always nice to get back home to Windsor. Also, my wife worked at Mothercare and Waitrose for 28 years, all told. We have three daughters who went to Oakfield, Travellion and Windsor Girls. And we all love this town and that's why we're all here this evening. Now, as you know, a year ago, we had an unprecedented meeting at the Guild Hall in Windsor. And people came from all over, all ages to meet at the Guild Hall last year to pass a motion that we should have a town council so we can have a say. It's our town and our say and we want to make them decisions. Now, at that meeting, there was a proposal made and it was passed that we form that town council. The Chairperson at that meeting was a former Mayor, Dee Quick. And Dee Quick said to me, Robbie, because that's what she used to call me, she said, Robbie, I want you to be my Deputy Chair. I said, hold on a second, Dee, I know nothing about politics, what do you mean? But she said, that's exactly why I want you to be my Deputy. I said, okay, I will do everything I can for you, Dee, and support you 100% in whatever you do to get this town council through. Now, when she appointed me the Vice Chair, I thought, okay, she can mentor me and help me. However, unfortunately, three months later, Dee passed away. And I think the Reverend Quick is here this evening and we want to do a minute silence for Dee in a more formal setting, hopefully at the Guild Hall sometime later in the year. Today's meeting really is about a progress report on an amazing year. A year in which began the formal process of reorganising the town council. This is what we want to do. And you know, before I start, I just want to show you a slide where all the people in this town come from. These are the people that are involved in the actual Windsor Town Council group at the moment. This is our steering group. And you know, the unique thing about this is it's cross-party. It doesn't matter whether you're Labour, Tory, Liberal, and in this day and age, we've got people who are not of any political affiliation, but we're all coming together. And why are we all coming together? Well, I'll tell you why we're all coming together, because what we want, we want to say what happens in our town. And the thing is, we can't do that without you. We need you to help us. That's why we're making this plea this evening to support this motion for a town council. Thank you for that. Now, the other thing is about this team, I'm going to go through a few of the names with you. We have Richard Endicott, our Chief Executive Officer. We have Andrew Walker, who is the Assistant Executive Officer. We also have Alison Carpenter, who's our Campaign Manager. Heidi Berry, which is our PR person, that's doing an excellent job. And we've got all the other helpers that are helping us deliver leaflets throughout this town. However, we have also on this, on this group, we have got, we've got George Bathurst, Will Calvert, John Holland, Victoria Haywood, Gareth Jones, Claire Milne and John Webb. Now, that is a unique team. We're working together for one cause to give you a say in what happens in your town. So, before I go any further, I would like to say, we all want the same outcome. We want to say what happens in our town. What I'm going to do now is show you a little slide there and you can see what it covers. It covers right from the Spital, right round to Clewer Green, Deadworth, Windsor and back into the town again. So, I hope you support us. We really need your support in this. And can I thank all the people that have already made donations to this cause? There will be a sign going up later on which you can donate to if necessary. But now, I hope you've enjoyed my short intro and I will now hand you over to Richard Endicott.
Richard, you might need to unmute maybe?
Yeah, that's better. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Windsor Town Council Steering Group. Tonight, I'm going to outline the background to today's meeting and the rationale behind the project. What we are proposing is not actually new. In fact, Windsor's had a successful town council for over 800 years, between the late 12th century and 1974, which surrounded the key moments in history. Indeed, the Restoration strengthened the role of the people in that old relationship with the Crown. And the late 17th century, a guild was established with a purpose-built Guild Hall to go with it. A bit more of that later. Since 1974, there's been a build-up of dissatisfaction with the governance arrangement with Maidenhead. Indeed, this evening, an elderly resident from Tesford Road knocked on my door to express her support for our project. But as she does not have access to the internet, she wasn't sure how she can contribute. She does now. Her view was quite simple, that there is a democratic deficit between the much larger and dominant Maidenhead and the Royal Town of Windsor. Now, in 2018, the Royal Borough Windsor Maidenhead undertook a review of the ward boundaries, which not only broadened the role of the ward councillors, but also inexplicably paired the Boltons with Old Windsor, leaving the residents of that area both disenfranchised and separated from the main Windsor town. The May 2019 elections gave a clear indication for Windsor residents that they really are not bothered about party politics and prefer to focus on more localised issues with a real cross-representation of all parties and interests across the town. Since then, a non-partisan steering group has been formed and not only collected over 2,000 signatures, but also influenced council leader Andrew Johnson to announce at full council on the 28th of July, a governance review of the current setup, which is where we are right now. So, what about the rationale behind the project? The rationale can be divided into four very clear areas. Civic pride, local decision-making, community participation and robust and transparent administration. I personally am a proud Deadworthian. Myself and my wife and my children all participate in the local sports teams and community organisations across Windsor. I attended Deadworth Green First School, Deadworth Middle School and the Windsor Boys' School, where I went on to teach for over a decade. My family, like you, are all intrinsically linked with this town. Now, Windsor, it is said, is a village. Everyone knows everyone and that was before the advent of social media. But what happens in the town centre has a knock-on effect in Clewer, Deadworth and Spital and vice versa. Everyone in this community is so proud of where we live and we're very proud of our beautiful and historic town. Yet, we feel underrepresented in decision-making. Attempts have been made via the Windsor Town Forum. Yet, last week, this body refused to discuss the current situation with bin collections or even the governance review, which has shown by the turnout tonight, affects Windsor residents. We are going through a period of huge change and we want to work with the principal authority, the Royal Borough of Windsor Maidenhead, to give our residents and businesses the representation they deserve. And once, for example, the town council be unable to make planning decisions, we will be a statutory consultee, which means there is an extra layer of protection to ensure that we can avoid problems such as the rank Hogis McDougall behemoth and the £250,000 wasted challenge in a Legoland proposal. Now, I want to hand over to Andre Walker, who will talk to you about the Guild and the importance of community engagement. Andre, Andre, you need to unmute, sorry.
Let's have another go at that. Hello everyone, my name's Andre Walker. I just wanted to say what enormous pride, one sense of enormous pride I get from being here just a little over a year after that unprecedented motion. And I want to thank my colleagues on the Steering Committee for the amount of work that they've done over the past year. I think it's been a phenomenal effort where we've come together from all different backgrounds. I'm a former political advisor to the Royal Borough of Windsor Maidenhead and I live on Clarence Road. But in this capacity, I want to talk to you a little bit more about the fact that I'm the former Deputy Master of the Guild of Young Freemans of the City of London, which means that I was awarded the Freedom of the City of London, which I can show you here, which is quite a nice plaque. But also, I was involved in the Guild of Freemans. Now, the thing that absolutely amazed me about Windsor is that despite the fact we have a Guild Hall and despite the fact we're a historic town, we don't have a Guild of Freemans and indeed, the Honour of Freemans of Windsor has not been given out since 1974. And I think that this is an area of opportunity that should hugely excite the town. Simply because when the town council is reinstituted, it will have the power to give out freedom of the town to people who've contributed to the voluntary sector or to the charity sector or to the various sports clubs that we've seen. So, when we see young people potentially winning major awards for, say, cricket or rugby, then they would be awarded the freedom of Windsor to congratulate them additionally for that success. And what we will see, I think, in Windsor is what we see in London, is that a significant amount of volunteering and charity work and community engagement is encouraged by that honour being available to the town to reward excellence. But also in London, there are various Guilds of Freemans, which are charitable bodies. And effectively, what they do is they hold regular events, whether it be the Sheep Drive over London Bridge, which many of you will have heard of, and in fact, I used to drive the sheep because it was the woolmakers and the Young Freemans that did the Sheep Drive, whether it's that, which is a major charitable event, or whether it's something that Will Calvert from the Windsor Eton Brewery will have been involved in, which is the various beer festivals that take place at London's Guild Hall and indeed dinners with the mer and so on and so forth. But effectively, these guilds bring in millions upon millions for local charities. And that is something that's phenomenal. Now, I am not claiming for one second, we're going to end up in Windsor with a separate Guild for brewers and a separate Guild for bakers and a separate Guild for candlestick makers. Although actually, in truth, in London, there are two guilds for candlestick makers. I'm not claiming we're going to do that. But I think to be able to have one Guild that raises money for charity would be a phenomenal thing. Now, as I said earlier, when the town council is reinstituted, it will have an automatic right to give out freedom of the town. That's not something that would be unusual or unique. And obviously, those Freemans would be able to form a Guild. So, Windsor wouldn't be in any way special or unusual, but I think that we could do this in a special and unusual way. So, my message tonight is this, I think that we have a huge opportunity to reward excellence, to bring in more volunteering, to encourage people to engage in charity far more and also to raise a lot of money. And also, I think, to have a great deal of fun, because we are a unique and historic town. And to have this unique, to have this historic award and this historic organisation brought back to Windsor, I think will be a major contribution and I'm happy to assist with that. And also, what we hope is, just to close, that plenty of you are going to want your plaque as well. And so, we're going to get loads of nominations for people that have done great stuff for the town. Back to you, Richard.
Thank you, Andre. Excellent, you know, that's exactly what we're about, is about community engagement and mobilising local people in local projects. And thanks, Andre, for that presentation. Now, of course, robust and transparent administration is at the centre of the discussion. Now, I'm sure the cost of delivering the town council will be covered in your questions. So, I will leave that until a bit later on and try and answer what comes through. However, with all the major political parties and none represented on our steering group, we are hoping that members will leave their National Party political allegiance at the front door. Whilst we cannot enshrine that, sadly, we are hoping that the local political parties will realise that there is very little political capital in mowing your local green space. So, hopefully, you know, the political parties that are represented tonight will bear that in mind. There's also some other questions coming through, which I will address some now before the Q and A. So, do keep them coming through. In terms of current borough councillors standing on the council, there's nothing to stop a current borough councillor standing for the town council. But they've already expressed that their workload is far too high and particularly with the larger wards which have been created. The understanding is, is that the workload would be far too onerous for them to stand on the town council as well as the borough council. Now, some of you may recognise my Windsor Boys' School old boys blazer, which I'm wearing today. Now, at this school, they have an old Latin motto, uno animo. In Latin, it means one spirit. We believe our local community has that uno animo feel. And overall, the message is clear. We think that a Windsor Town Council will bring pride back to our town, engage the community and ensure robust and transparent administration. I will now hand over to Claire Milne, who will talk you through the next steps.
I'll mute myself. Thank you, Richard. That was really interesting. I just want to introduce myself for those people that don't know me. You might have come across me as co-chair of Windsor Neighbourhood Plan Forum. I'm a long-term Windsor resident and have been involved in local activities for quite the last 10 years or so. Also Chair of the Bolton's Residents' Association. We've been, I've been very much, a personal view about how I've been involved in the town and how much people have shown through the Windsor Neighbourhood Plan and the Residents' Associations how much they love this town and how much they want to get involved and really give their time and expertise to volunteer freely to it. There's lots of skill and energy in this town and I think the town council will be a good way to actually bring that together. Just to introduce the governance review then, we're now in the first phase of consultations. Consultations one on the screen. And this review process, this phase ends on the 28th of October. And the result of that will be some draft recommendations. They will then be put to a second consultation, which will end in, it lasts for three months. So, it will go roughly January, April 21. And that will result in final recommendations, which will then go to council for a decision on July 2021. And with implementation, not until May 2023, which I believe the next parish elections. So, what we wanted to put across to you now and today is really, first, how you can respond. And secondly, what sort of response you might want to give. And obviously, we're not going to put words in your mouth, but we would hope that some of the messages that we're giving tonight might influence what you feel you could say. So, first of all, how you can respond. The public consultation, as I said, closes on Friday 28th of October. So, it's only really a few more weeks left, so you have to start getting your thoughts together. We would like you to send your comments to electoral services by email or by post. And they are obviously borough, they are borough contacts, borough places where you will actually respond to. And we have really, there are going to be two options as a result of this consultation exercise and as a result of what the governance review decides. There will either be no change, that means obviously, there will be no town council for Windsor, or there will be an introduction of a town council, either in part of the area, all of the area. And the boundaries will need to be described and defined. It is, which is our view, that there will be different questions as a result of the, within the governance review that they're trying to answer. And these are the sorts of responses that need to be tailored to, your answers need to be tailored to these questions. Firstly, the main question really is, do people want to need a town council? That's the one we've really got to say loud and clear, yes. What should the boundaries be? Should the overall boundaries, should there be wards or should it be unwarded, which reflect the different communities in the area? And if so, how should those ward boundaries be drawn? So, you know, it's fine to simply give your opinion and that's, that's great. We really want as many people as possible to give their opinions, but also backed up by evidence if you can. And it's our view that residents should really submit two clear points. One, we submit the, we support the formation of the town council in the whole of the unparished area of Windsor. And second, that the governance review process is long and a new council should be initiated sooner, if at all possible, hopefully by May 2022. So, a year earlier than the likely result if the decision is made for town council. So, I hope you found that quick, brief run-through on the process helpful. I'll hand back to Rob, who will take us forward from here.
Hello, yes, I hope you've enjoyed that last few minutes talking about what we intend to do and what we're going to try and do. Cutting that out just for a minute, what I'd like to say before we go any further is, you know, I think it's what everybody should want anyway. I mean, don't you want to say in what happens in your town? Don't you want to decide what's going to happen in the future for this town? And when I say town, I'm not talking about Windsor Town Centre. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the whole town. You know, now it's called the Raw Windsor Way. We're going beyond that now, we want to bring this town together. For too long, there's been a little bit of separation. I don't want to see that anymore. We want it all to come together so we can work together for the people of this town. And I love this town very much, I think you understand that, because I can get quite emotional about Windsor myself. So, I think we can go to questions and answers, I think, Alison, at the moment.
Yeah, okay, so the first question we have is for Marjorie Thorogood. It says, I understand that town councils are aimed to be apolitical. How will this be achieved? So, Andre, would you be able to answer that one, please?
Yeah, I think so. I think that everybody has their own political views and they're going to vote differently in national general elections. But at the same time, we don't believe that there's anything party political within this. And I think that we are hoping that every political party would recognise that. I personally used to advise the Conservative Party, as you probably know. And I know that the Conservative Party has a policy generally not to run for parish and town councils. And obviously, I'm going to make the point to them that I think they need to stick to that. I would, I think the West Windsor Party has already said that they will not stand official candidates. And we're hoping, hoping, Marjorie, that the Labour Party will also come on board with that decision. But I think overall, what we've got to say as a group of people is that this is a non-political thing, a non-party political thing. And I think if we say that with one voice, the political parties will have to go along with it. Because after all, if everybody's running as an independent, other than one political party, that political party will lose badly and therefore, I don't think it's in their interest to run at all.
Thank you for that, Andre.
Thank you, Andre. The second question from Marjorie was around, should this be extended to business interests? And she goes on to point out, it might explain why some people are keen to participate, should this become a reality? So, I don't know who wants to take that one, I think I'm going to point that one to Richard, if I may.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Marjorie, thanks for that interesting question. Look, we can't stop anyone from standing, okay? There was no preclusion to standing, whether that's for business interests or for party political interests or whatever. It'd be up to the electorate to hopefully be able to see through that and cast their vote accordingly. But there's nothing that we can enshrine in a constitution, which would prevent somebody from standing purely because of their business interests.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the next question is from Lewis Tobin Powell, who said, when do we estimate that this will form? When would voting happen and how do people apply to run for this? So, that's three questions, but Richard, maybe you could take that one.
Again, thank you very much. Look, we're officially, apart the governance review, that they are looking to run the elections at the same time as the borough elections in May 2023. We personally think that that's quite a long time, you know, that's just under three years away. And we feel as though the borough should really get on with this town council, get on with it. My personal recommendation is that we should run elections in May 2021, which is at the same time as the Police and Commissioner elections. But, you know, obviously, the cogs of local government don't run quite as quickly as perhaps we're used to in schools. And realistically, I think May 2022 will be the date of the election, if we can bring it forward. How do you stand? It's a very similar process as you would do for any, any election, whether that's a national election or a local election, in that you grab yourself some nomination papers from the borough and you ask people to sign your nominations to support you and that's how you enter the competition. So, but details about that will become clearer when we get towards our first elections.
Richard, can I just dovetail on to that and just say that I think that that relates actually back in some respects to what Marjorie said. I think it's extremely important that we widen participation here and we don't have kind of the usual suspects involved in absolutely everything. So, I think what we would want to do as a group is go out and advertise widely and say to people who are involved in the community, hey, you don't have to be afraid of running for this town council. And so, I think by doing that, not only do you widen participation, you get more voices involved, but also you weaken the grip of the political parties.
Can I just come in on that as well, Andre? So, you will notice from the steering group that there are no existing borough councillors on our steering group. And that's actually a move that we have decided ourselves, that Andre's absolutely right. We don't want the same faces dominating the political scene here in Windsor. We actually want to widen and broaden the, you know, the scope of the discussion and as we said in the presentation, to engage the community much more effectively.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the next question is from John Henson, who said, can we be assured that the proposed council won't just become a vehicle for single-issue activists? So, who wants to take that one?
I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you.
Well, I think that there are two ways of doing it, in my own view. I think number one, single issues are important and so we should encourage people who are single-issue activists to get involved. However, I think that what we need to do is we need in this consultation to say very firmly that every community should have their own ward. Because at the moment, the problem that we've got with the borough council is, you know, you've got the Boltons in Old Windsor. You know, it's not very clear where you live in terms of when you look at the ward boundaries. And so, I think if we have each and every community electing councillors, then you will ensure that the election within those areas will relate to those areas. Rather than if you had just one big ward for the whole town council, what would happen is the most organised, say, charity or church or political group would just dominate the whole thing. But I think as long as we've got those wards representing each and every community, then I think we're safe from that problem.
Okay, next question is about the money question. What's the likely impact on council tax? Richard and Andre, Richard, can we pass that between the first instance, explain the precept, concept, et cetera?
Absolutely right. Okay, this is, this is actually probably the one defining question, which is why I sort of left it to the question and answers. Because it's the question that sort of affects everybody. You know, currently, we pay a precept, which amounts to about £36 a year for an average bandy property. Okay, so, you know, each of you pays a certain amount and it's on your council tax bill. But it'd be marked on your council tax bill as special expenses. Okay, now, special expenses are those expenses which are for unparished areas are charged to costs incurred for provision of an amenity or service that is primarily for the benefit of residents. So, this amenity or service would normally be So this amenity or service would normally be provided by a parish council. But of course, we haven't got a parish council, so therefore, the borough runs those services. The problem is, there is no budget at RBWM, there's no budget line at the borough for the costs of these special expenses. So we don't actually know where this money is being spent and where. Now, there's a second element to this, is that the £36 that is raised is actually a made up figure. So in other words, the £36 which they have decided on is they've looked at the parished areas and seen what a band E typical property looks like, taken an average and then decided Windsor that will do. So there's, there's no substance behind that particular cost. Now, that's, that's the easy bit, okay? The, the way that SIPF, there's a SIPF report which was published in July. And the SIPF report recommended a change to the way that they do this. And the way that they should do this, which they don't, is to look at the costs of running these amenities or services, subtracting the income which can be generated for these, from these particular assets that we have in the borough, in the town. And then working out the precept that way. So there's a double edged sword here. And that is the fact that £36 is, I don't know if that's right or that's wrong, you know, in terms of it, it's a completely made up figure. But from what I've seen and what I've tried to do, I've been working quite closely with Sunningdale Parish Council and another couple of parish councils to see how they bring their budget together. Now, for example, if I was to use green spaces, because one of the main areas of responsibility for a parish council would be green spaces or open spaces. Now, there are 60 open spaces across Windsor, okay? And they range from Whiteley to Sutherland Grange to Deadworth Manor to Cluorec, to Osgood Park, to Vancetart Park, the Home Park, Alexander Gardens, Bachelors, you can reel them off yourself, can't you? But also, and, and some of you may, may be aware, that there are a number of green spaces outside of your properties, which are, which are RBWM owned properties. Now, these still need to be maintained. And I've got one outside the front of our house over here. They should be maintained by, by RBWM and isn't. Now, the cost of that particular service, so for example, the cost of a day's labour for a large park, take Osgood Park as an example, to mow the, mow the grass and to upkeep the trees and the shrubs is in the region of around £400 a time. There's a day's job essentially to, to upkeep that particular area. Now, depending on the weather, so whether it's a warm winter or a cold winter, you know, sorry, a warm summer or a cold summer, will depend how many £400 need to be spent. So it could be 15 times a year that that area needs to be cut, or it could be as low as 10 or 11 times that that area needs to be cut. It's a rather long winded answer, I grant you, but if you keep with me. So in other words, to maintain Osgood Park would cost you, the taxpayer, around about £6,000 a year to maintain. Okay, now, there are 11 of those large areas, okay? And plus the 49 other smaller areas. And my calculations come, say that the maintenance of those particular areas come to under £100,000. Okay, so just under £100,000, about £94,000 for the maintenance of the open spaces. Now, that's a large chunk of our responsibilities as a town council. In addition to that, you've also got the play parks, the play areas. So for example, Knights Close, which is just at the end of my road up here, needs urgent upgrade. That will cost the town council in the region of £30,000 to upgrade that play equipment. But once it's done, it should be good for another 15 or 20 years. Whereas Bachelor's Acre, which was done recently, within the last five years, shouldn't need to be done for another 10 years or so. So the upshot of that is, is looking at our costs, the £36 precept that you currently pay currently raises about £650,000 on its own. Now, Andre gave a presentation earlier about potentially raising capital through other projects, through community projects, through, through the guild or whatever. So we think, we hope, now we're budgeting, for around about a million pound organisation. I think that the services can be delivered on around about 50 to 60% of that figure. So in other words, moving forwards, we are hoping, because we don't have a full asset list from RBWM yet, we are hoping that there is potential to, at the very worst, keep the precept the same and perhaps look at maybe bringing it down a notch or two.
Can I, can I, can I say something? Because I think Richard is being very, very careful. This is his teacher's hat on. Look, first and foremost, I think what people are asking is, is my council tax going to go up? Let me tell you, first and foremost, the precept that you pay for the, for the town council that doesn't exist in Windsor is actually higher than what Ascot Parish Council charge their residents. So you are not paying the lowest tax, even though you don't even have a town council. The reason that RBWM, when we put Freedom of Information Request in, the reason that they couldn't tell us how much they're spending locally is because there is no way on God's green earth they are paying £650,000 a year to, to mow the lawns of all the parks in Windsor. It's nonsense. This money is going into central funds. I think that we would, at the very least, be able to, we would, at the very least, be able to put money into reserves. We could probably offer a major tax cut, but actually, I would personally advocate that we put money in reserves, because I think we could potentially invest in new things around the town. But I will tell you, the idea that this will cost more is absolute bonkers.
Okay, there, there we have it. Thanks, Andre. So the next question is from Lizzy Jones, who is asking, I wondered if the Windsor Town Council had any plans for a business industrial district for Windsor? And I would like to ask maybe George, first this question? George, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Alison. Yes, I can answer that, yes. There are still plans or desire from local businesses to, to do a business improvement district. There's also the possibility of a tourism improvement district. And it's not a good year for tourism, as many of you may have spotted, but actually, this is also brought into relief. And I think talking to Andrew Johnson, that he was saying as well, how Windsor's a little bit out of kilter in terms of how it pays for itself and the, the appeal of the town to people in the region, not just internationally. So there is moves afoot to do that. And actually, we could be a great help to the local businesses, who everybody wants to see be successful. Nobody wants to see Daniels or Waitrose leave this town and equally at the, in the suburbs as well, they're important local centres. So there is something that can be done and the local parish or town council can actually take ownership of that business improvement district and be its governance. So again, it gives us more power as local people to direct and govern the, the local business improvement district. And hopefully, we can support that, rather than as Maidenhead sort of vetoed it and then just made nothing happen. So again, we can provide a little bit of local impetus to help.
Thank you, George. Next question, well, we've seen a few come up relating to the number, proposed number of councils and wards. So we'll try and net them into one. And can I point this to Andre, please?
Yes, I mean, I've not seen the details of every single question, but personally, I believe, I do not believe in professional councillors. I hate the idea of people being paid to be town or parish councillors. It's not really the done thing, anyway. So I'd like to have lots and lots of people. And so my own view is that we should draw up a list of every community within the area and give them at least two councillors and then top up for larger areas. And I would also like the principle to be that everybody knows where they live. I absolutely hate all of these. I live in something west and somewhere else east, or, you know, Deadworth North and Cluore or something like that. I would like really simple places. Do you live in, you know, do you live on the Langer States? Do you live in Cluore Town? Do you live in St Leonard's Hill? Just really, really simple wards, rather than all this confusing old nonsense. Now, that does mean that we will have a relatively large council, but personally, I think that when you're talking about volunteers, the more, the better. And obviously, that will mean that, that the council meetings might take slightly longer, but also it means that everybody gets their voice. And so I just don't want the idea, or I don't personally support the idea of having, you know, say, five or six councillors for the whole of Windsor. I would rather go with, you know, maybe 25 or 30 people, each representing their own community. Because I think if you get that large number of people together, it's going to be, it's going to have so much more spark, so much more energy and give us so much more of an opportunity to exchange ideas. And once again, I come back to the simple point, the, you know, the more councillors we have, the more wards we have, the more communities represented, the more ordinary people will get involved. And I think that that is absolutely vital. What I see at the moment at the borough is people who are effectively professional councillors being paid to do it. Nothing wrong with that, but it's because of the workload they've got. If we got more people with a smaller workload representing each community, I believe that would be a great thing for the town.
Thank you, Andre. That's great. Okay, so we have just a few more questions. If anyone else has got any questions, please put them in the chat. So we've got a question now that said, I would like a say in things that directly affect Windsor and dislike the fact the majority of borough councillors represent Maidenhead, who therefore always hold the majority vote on matters and seem to have little care for the heritage and special interests of Windsor Town. So what power will Windsor Town Council actually have in influencing the running of Windsor? Can you truly and meaningfully influence planning, traffic, parking, et cetera? Richard, do you want to start with that one?
Yes, I'll start with that one. Look, in terms of planning, the role would be purely advisory and, you know, other, there are certain statutory obligations which, which the borough run themselves. You know, the BINS contract, for example, is, you know, is a borough wide contract. What we can do is put a bit of pressure on, on the, on the primary council for which we would be a subsidiary. Don't forget that we're not working in competition with the Royal Borough of Windsor Mainhead. We are actually working alongside, we are a subsidiary of the principal authority. And they have that authority over, over certain areas, adult, social care, education, the BINS contract, et cetera. In terms of parking, parking is a slightly different area. And I'm hoping that we would be able to take a bit more control over the way that the parking's run. I'm really confused currently as to why there is such a disparity between the comparatively cheap parking in Maidenhead to the, to the very expensive parking in Windsor. And I think that, that that needs to be looked at and that's something hopefully will come out of this discussion.
I just, I just thought I'd make a very quick point. You know, I lived on Clarence Road and, sorry, I lived on Trinity Place and now live on Clarence Road, but I worked at Maidenhead Town Hall. And the big problem is, because nobody really ever speaks for Windsor, that is why the conversations at Maidenhead Town Hall are always about Maidenhead. You know, I'm a long term Windsor resident and yet I can honestly say in my time as political advisor, I really didn't do anything for Windsor at all. And that's because it's all about, what are we going to do about Maidenhead regeneration? What are we going to do about Crossrail? What are we going to do about this? And it all tends to be Maidenhead centric. I think we shouldn't underestimate the power of just getting together as a town and speaking with one voice on various issues. Sure, this town council won't have the official policy, official powers to overturn every policy, but what it will have is a huge amount of clout in terms of influence, in terms of talking to the media and in terms of bringing people together. And I think that once we start speaking as a town together, that is when change will start to happen.
Everybody, we're just trying to sift through the questions and try and make sure that we're covering and not duplicating efforts in the interest of everybody's time. And over one that stands out for me that's next on the list seems to be, will the Windsor Town manager report to the WTC? Don't know who'd like to take that.
George, do you want to pick this up?
Yeah, I don't think we should necessarily talk about particular individuals here, but I do think that there's an opportunity. It links in with the Business Improvement District, which may be a successor to the Windsor Town Partnership, which the Windsor, which I used to manage when I was the councillor here, and also which Paul is the sort of day to day manager of. So there is an opportunity to troop his staff across from the council and that will be subject to negotiation. And it could well mix in with what we decide to do as a group with businesses as a whole and how we choose to govern that. Absolutely, yeah. So yes, there's a possibility for lots of things like that.
Okay, thank you, George. So we've got another question here that's really a follow up to the question that you answered earlier for the Walkers. Sorry, that's your name on Zoom. So really, they're saying that their point was really that even if we isolate the precept for Windsor, how can we stop RBWM just increasing our council tax to cover the difference the following year? We might gain more involvement, but could we be still on council tax as RBWM try to recoup it?
Well, well, let me just say, I mean, the vast majority of, of, the majority of council taxpayers are in Maidenhead and therefore I don't think they're going to put up council tax. Remember, the Conservative group is, as I say, a majority Maidenhead councillors. And so they're not going to put themselves in a position where they put up council tax across the board to, to fund anything here. And that's, that's a sad fact, but I think it is a fact. In terms of them putting up taxes locally in Windsor, they're not able to do that. They can only put up council tax right across the board, or at least that's my understanding. Richard, that's right, isn't it? You'll have to unmute, Richard, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, that's absolutely right, Andre. The, the council tax can only be raised by a maximum of 2.99% each year by the, by the primary council. So there is actually no threat of the borough raising your council tax in order to, to make up the difference.
Thank you. And while we're on the subject of money again, just clarification, would the town council have to pay for things like repairs and maintenance to buildings such as the Guild Hall?
Okay, and one of my, one of my other hats is to be effectively lead negotiator for the town council group with the Royal Borough of Windsor and Maidenhead. As you know, the Guild Hall is effectively closed. You can open it for the odd wedding, but effectively, it's basically closed down now. We see that as something that's, that's a sad situation. We're in discussions with RBWM about potentially the town council taking it over. Obviously, obviously, we would not be in a position to refurbish it to the standard that we gave it to them in 1974. So those discussions are ongoing, but just rest assured that we, as a steering group, recognise that risk and that we are going to be responsible about it. But we do think that between RBWM and the town council, there is a duty to reopen this important historic facility. And the idea that it remained closed permanently, I think is a sad state of affairs. And that, that also goes for the, for the museum, by the way. But obviously, in terms of money, they would have to finance the refurbishment. We just, we just simply wouldn't be in a position to do that. And consequently, we would not, we would not accept the Guild Hall unless there was a deal on the money.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not actually sure that we have any more questions. I'm just checking.
There is, there is one from, from Ian about the town council responsibilities, the numbers of councillors. Look, these, that's a very good question, thank you. The question is in the negotiation with RBWM, you know? So what will our responsibilities be? That all depends on the outcome of the negotiations following an exclamation from the town via the governance review that this is something that we want to pursue. Okay, and ultimately, you know, it will be very low key, be things like green spaces, be things like maintenance of pathways, for example, allotments, cemeteries, you know, that sort of thing. It's, it's quite low, low key really, but you can't, I'm just reading the comments. No, it's not up to us to pick and choose. It's the negotiation with the borough. What, what will the borough give us? And, you know, obviously, what, what can we take on? It's not in the borough's interest to see us fail. Let's make that very, very clear. It's not an us and them situation between us and RBWM. It is a relationship that will build over time and what we are responsible for will come from the negotiations, but also, you know, as to the wishes of the first elected group in, whenever that might be.
Okay, thank you very much.
I fear, I fear, I fear that picking and choosing assets might be, may be my reference, the Guild Hall. Just to be clear, we would be required to take on any parks, maintenance that the Royal Borough give us, but we wouldn't be required, absolutely required to take on the Guild Hall. So we, that would be something So we, that would be something that would be subject to negotiation, whereas the parks would not be.
Okay, is there any more questions? If you want to type them in the chat, that would be great. We'll do our best to answer them. Okay, otherwise, that we hope you found this useful. I'm going to hand over to Robert now for some closing words.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, Rob, before we start, Ian's asking a few questions here.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, but you cannot pick and choose the things that you take on to maintain. That's, that's, that's right. And I hope he, Andre's answered that point. I, I don't understand the question, what are you?
I think, I think, I think when he says, what are we proposing? I mean, just to nail it, we are proposing in 2021 or 2022 to have an election for a new town council. That town council will look after the, the parks and maintenance of those parks. It will look at holding more community events. It will hope to bring people together. As part of that proposal, we want every community represented within the town. We will also take on the precept that the Royal Borough is at the moment collecting. And we have proposed to represent the whole of Windsor, not two councils or three councils or Deadworth set off from the town centre. And at that time, we also hope to reinstitute freedom of the town and set up a guild of freemen to reward success and to raise money. I think that is what we're proposing. I thought that was clear from the presentations, but I just thought I'd nail it, just in case.
Okay, and, and Andre, I know you were expecting someone else to attend. I'm not sure if they're here or not.
No, unfortunately, we, we were hoping to have a representative of RBWM just to say a few words, but it looks like they've got an overview and scrutiny committee tonight that's overrun. We, we will do that next time, because I, I think, I sincerely hope, Mr Chairman, that we will have more of these meetings going forward. Because clearly, we were badly affected by the coronavirus. We had a series of meetings, and then they kind of tailed off a little bit because of the pandemic we find ourselves in.
Okay, thanks. So shall we hand back to Robert?
Okay, thank you. Well said, Andre. Yes, we did have a problem with lockdown. However, the steering group were meeting every week to discuss the future. So, you know, we kept on going, we kept the momentum going. So to all the people that have listened in this evening, you know, I really do hope that, you know, you've learned something, that it's a cross-party action, and we want you behind us. And, and we really need your support and help. So, you know, hope you enjoy this evening. We're going to do another one, and we'll let you know exactly when that's going to be. And perhaps we can, if you're happy with this format, let us know. If you're not, perhaps we can do it a different way. But without your help, we can't do anything. So to you all, have a good night, take care, and keep safe.